This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the September fourteenth, 2021 zoning board meeting. Ah, there he is. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street. That's where we are, right here. And via Zoom with the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. The meeting can also be streamed through the city's website, nashua-nh.gov/318/cTV. The public may also view this meeting live on Comcast Channel 16. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled.
Welcome to Bexley. You can talk to me.
Yes, please, please silence your cell phones. Thank you. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. We do not have the light timer today.
We'll be doing it through Zoom.
We're doing it through Zoom. Okay, so, um, those, the, uh, normally we have a light timer used to manage speaking time, but there will be a clock shown on the screen that will indicate how much time is left for the current speaker. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for equitable waiver and variances. An equitable waiver is requesting permission for violating the Nashua zoning code because of a, an honest mistake in measurement or something else. It's not used for ignorance of the law or prior, prior to creation of whatever the action was that caused the ordinance to be violated. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances have five points of law to be met. These will be mentioned, it's outlined in the application and summarized in Board motions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases of a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I am the Chair. We have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who is our Vice Chair. On Zoom, we have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our Clerk, and we have Mr. J. P. Boucher. We also have the following alternate member in attendance, Mr. Jay Mankara. So that's five people total, so we, everybody will be voting on, on every issue unless they recuse themselves. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, Zoning Coordinator. I don't know if Matt Sullivan is on Zoom.
He's.
Oh, he's, oh, he's there in the room. Hey, all right. Uh, Mr. Matt Sullivan is the Planning Department Director, he's here in the room. So let us start by take, to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there was anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. So, Mary Ellen McKay.
Present.
Uh, Jack Courier.
I'm present on Zoom. There's no one in the room with me. I had a pre-planned trip out of town, uh, and that's why I'm not, uh, present at City Hall tonight.
Okay, uh, J. P. Boucher.
Present.
Jay Mankara.
Present.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Uh, I will now read the first case into the record. The owner, Brian Lovell and Jennifer Wright. Applicant is Bastian Building and Development, seven Selpan Way, Sheet 58, Lot 14, requesting equitable waiver from RSA 674:33A to maintain an existing deck that encroaches four feet into the 25-foot rear yard setback. This is in the RA Zone, Ward Two. Is there someone here to present the case or on Zoom? I'm not hearing anybody. I can't read the attendee list. Do you see a name on the list on?
Mr. Chair, we don't see the applicant in the room or on Zoom, so maybe we can go on to the next case and do that one last.
Sure, okay. We'll defer that case number one to the end. Before I continue, are there, is there anybody in the audience with questions about how we're going to be managing this process? I, I forget to ask that. This is only the second non-Zoom meeting we've had in a year and a half. Okay, thank you. Case number two. The owners are Anthony and Susan Diggins, revocable trust, address 104 Robinson Road, Sheet B, Lot 177, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 17-foot six-inch home addition. This is in the RA Zone, Ward Six. Do we have somebody to present the case? All right, thank you. Please step up to the podium and, uh, lectern, excuse me. I need to, is that right? Uh, state your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening. My name is Susan Diggins, and I reside at 104 Robinson Road with my husband Anthony Diggins, and we are requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 17, um, six-inch home addition. Our home was built in 1954, and the current zoning codes did not apply as they do now, so our current side setback is seven feet, um, three feet short of the property line. My husband and I are looking ahead to retirement. We've lived in the home for 31 years, and we are looking to stay, so we would like to bring our laundry to the first floor. We live in a, it's a ranch, obviously. Um, and to do that, we need to extend our master bedroom out eight feet in order to make a laundry closet, um, of sorts for the moving of the washer and dryer to the first floor. We also are looking to increase our bathroom size and update it. Some of the electrical is not to current code standards. We want to replace flooring and make it, um, a little bit more accessible for safety reasons, lighting, things like that, as we move forward. We're putting in a more walk-in shower-type modern, um, bath with, um, safety bars and such. Our intent is not to change the footprint any more than we need to. We, um, you know, we love the home we're in. It's, um, it fits well in the neighborhood. The home was built by the same builder as several of the surrounding ranches in the neighborhood. We have no intent to, um, do a lateral build on the left side of the home, but just to go out, um, the eight feet, and we have plenty of room in the front yard to do that. We do think that this will be, um, a benefit to the property value for our home and the surrounding homes with the upgrade, and we're doing a mirror, um, upgrade on the garage side of the home because of structural needs. And we're, we're intending to keep the front of the home looking essentially as it is, with siding, um, the roof pitch, we're not intending to go up on the roof pitch at all. Our direct abutters to the, um, left of the property and behind us are, um, in favor and approve of this enhancement for the home, and I do have a couple of letters here supporting that.
Yeah, we, we have, uh, we have received three letters regarding your case, and I'll enter those into the record, uh, in a little bit.
Thank you.
Do you have anything more to say right now?
No.
Okay, so questions from the Board? Anybody here in the room with questions? Not seeing anybody. Uh, Mr. Cur, oh, uh, Mr. Mankara, do you have a question?
Just to clarify for, for my own benefit, so as I understand it, there is no further encroachment of the side setback other than the fact that you're extending forward?
Correct.
And there is no impact to, the, the abutter that would be impacted is at 100 Robinson Road.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that would be Mr. and Mrs. Gunderson.
Yeah. Mr. Courier, did you have any comments?
No, I'm all, all side with the application as it was presented.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, is there anybody in the room, uh, who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. We do have two letters in favor. So let's see here. Okay. First one is from, here, okay. Tracy and Mark Schaaf at 107 Parnell Place. I am writing this letter in response to the notice of public hearing, case number two, dated August 31, 2021, requested variance to encroach within 10 feet of the property line by Susan and Anthony Diggins at 104 Robinson Road. I requested this letter be read into the record and considered during the upcoming hearing and decision during this, regarding this request. My family has resided at 107 Parnell Place, Nashua since 1998. Our entire rear property line abuts the rear of the Diggins' property. When we moved into our home 23 years ago, the Diggins family was very welcoming and have been great neighbors ever since. They have lived in their home longer and were well-established and respected in the neighborhood and community. While not caring for their own property, they can often be seen assisting and caring for other neighbors. The Diggins have always been and continue to be perfect neighbors. The Diggins have consistently kept their property in perfect shape. Their house and yard have always looked immaculate and have inspired us to work harder on our own property. Through the years, we have discussed plans for improvement such as tree removal, tree removal, fence replacement, et cetera. We then worked together to successfully complete those improvements. We were not surprised when we learned that they wanted to complete yet another improvement to their home. We are very confident that when completed, the addition will look beautiful to everyone in the neighborhood. It will undoubtedly increase the value of their property and surrounding properties in the neighborhood. Please let the record reflect that we completely support the Diggins' in this planned addition. We are confident that the final product will only enhance the appearance of the neighborhood. That's one letter, and we have another letter. My name is Edna Gunderson, and I live at 100 Robinson Road in Nashua. I am direct abutter to the property of Sue and Tony Diggins at 104 Robinson Road. The Diggins have requested a variance to expand their home and add a room to the front. My husband and I have no issues with this request. The Diggins' are very conscientious neighbors and have always been very respectful of our space. They maintain their property very well, and I'm sure this addition will enhance their home. This will not only benefit the Diggins family, but will help, likely help keep our property values up. John Edna Gunderson, 100 Robinson Road. So, uh, that's it for, uh, things in favor. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anyone. Um, I do, we do have one letter in opposition. I will read it. My name is Susan Zimmerman, and I own, reside at 108 Robinson Road in Nashua. A neighbor of, neighbor Susan and Anthony Diggins of 104 Robinson Road in Nashua. I'm writing to object to the encroachment of them building in three feet into the 10-foot variance, as I believe it is to be an infringement of my privacy and rights. I am concerned about this disturbing me as they entertain guests or have company over in this addition they are planning to build. Additionally, I have a grandson who attends and thrives at Sunset Heights and is in special education and is diagnosed with autism, and he would struggle with this, and it has already affected him because of how upset it has made me. I am unaware of the rights he would have regarding his disability, but perhaps you could tell me more about this, as I do think this would be a violation of our rights, and it's not in the best interest of him or, or my family. I have already had issues with trash being left on the side of the lawn and with them leaving lights on all night that shine into my bedroom and disturb my sleep. I worry how this would affect me with them being even closer. Also, I worry about the resale value of my property with this add-on. In closing, I do feel that my needs and my family needs should be taken into account and care for, explored. I would like to object to this, figure out my rights in this situation with your support, and sign, Susan Zimmerman, 108 Robinson Road. Okay, there is no more opposition testimony. Ms. Diggins, you have five minutes. You can, uh, answer any questions that, or that were raised, rebut the, uh, the objections. You have five minutes to say what you'd like.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board first of all, and I want to thank especially Kate Poirier for her facilitation in walking me through the process. As you can see, the neighbors that have lived near us and who are directly impacted by the, um, the variance request have supported our endeavors. They attest to our neighborly behavior and longstanding history with partnership and helping keep the neighborhood looking nice. I can't say that I understand where, um, Ms. Zimmerman's comments come from. This is the first I'm hearing of it outside of reading it before the meeting. Um, we have been excellent neighbors. I've actually facilitated tree removal on her yard, um, and I've paid for it. Um, my husband is immaculate, and we don't leave trash anywhere but at the end of the yard on trash day. And we do have a motion detector light on the side of our home that will sometimes go off when it's windy or if somebody's walking in the backyard. We have a fenced yard. So, I, um, you know, I, I reserve comment on any, any of the other comments that were in the letter. As I said, we've never been spoken to about this, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I guess Mrs. Zimmerman is not on the Zoom or not here to?
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
Oh, you are? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, okay. Uh, you can then have five minutes to, uh...
Well, I don't think it, I, I thought that it was on my side of the property that she wanted to do a variance.
Mr. Chairman, it should be.
You gotta...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you need to, you need to come up to the...
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Boucher. Otherwise, people online can't, and the recording can't hear you.
I did think that it was on my side of the yard that she wanted to build the, the variance, and there has been trash from, maybe not them, because they do keep their yard immaculate, but, um, somebody is leaving bottles on my lawn, like wine bottle is full, or, you know, like with one glass gone, you know, and we have picked it up a few times and put it in our recycling.
And just for the record, would you please give your name and address?
Yes, my name's Susan Zimmerman, and I live at 108 Robinson Road, next door neighbors to them.
All right. Now, my understanding is that there will be an expansion on the other side of the property that didn't require a variance. Is that correct?
Correct, those permits have been...
Yeah, Ms. Diggins. So, as far as the variance is concerned, we're only concerned with the, um, the setback on the other side of the property, but, uh, we've been told that there will be construction on your side of the property as well. But that's not something that we're, uh, that, uh, variance is required for, so we're not discussing that.
Okay. Yeah. Because I had gotten the postcard, so that's, that's why I was...
Yeah, well, you are in a butter, so you would, you would get notified of, of the case.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Start with Mr. Mankara.
Well, I, I support the application. Um, I mean, really, there is, they're following the existing setback with the extension, so there is, in that sense, no further intrusion. Uh, also, the impacted property owner is supportive, and I'd also just note that 100 Robinson Road has a, you know, especially large lot, and the house there is quite a distance from the, you know, affected lot lots, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application, uh, for the reasons that Mr. Mankara gave, and, and again, um, the home was built before the latest zoning, uh, later zoning, so it is not possible to, to move the house, and, um, the, the encroachment is, to me, is minimal for the amount of extension that they're asking for in front of the home.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with what my fellow Board members have already said. I don't think I could add anything to it, and I too support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I just wanted to throw an eye in with, uh, Mr. Mankara's comments, but also, I, I wanted to say I appreciate the level of detail, uh, in, in our application. I mean, over the years, I find that if someone thinks through their project, it, it's all the more likely it ends up as intended, as designed, and no surprises. And this is a very highly detailed, you know, architectural drawing, so I, I have high confidence it'll end up, it'll accomplish the goal that they're looking for, and I'm in full support.
Thank you. Okay, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Susan and Anthony Diggins, revocable trust, owners of 104 Robinson Road, Sheet B, Lot 177, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach three feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 17-foot six-inch home addition in the RA Zone, Ward Six. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. Again, special conditions are, as the home has existed or has predated the latest zoning, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served, so again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mankara. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, uh, Mr. Mankara, how do you vote?
Uh, Ms. Mankara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Uh, that's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Uh, please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Uh, contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department if you have any questions. Moving on to case number three. The owner is Rice Realty LLC. Applicant is Barbara Lau, address 101 Elm Street, Sheet 97, Lot 130, requesting use variance from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 72, to construct first floor of an existing building from medical supply store to a grocery store at most 10,000 square feet. This is in the RC Zone, Ward Four. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Yes.
Please step up to the podium, uh, lectern. I'll get it right one day. Uh, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Mark Kanakis, on behalf of the applicant, Barbara Lau. Uh, I have a handout I'd like to give the Board if, uh, that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Can I approach?
Is this something that was not in the original application?
It's not in the original. I think you've got the same map, that just helps out a little bit. I'm doing a circle by myself.
So this is, because we do, we do have a map, and I'm thinking Mr. Courier doesn't have the benefit of, of this particular map, so you may need to explain when you get to it.
But one thought, if you could hear me, is maybe Mr. Falk could just take a picture of that and text it to me while the applicant proceeds.
Oh, I can do, I can do that.
Mr. Chairman, while you're doing that with me tonight is Barbara Lau, who's the, uh, person who's going to be running the business, should the variance be granted. I'd just like her to introduce herself and tell you what, uh, what the property's about, and then I'll get on with my presentation, if that's okay.
So, all right, so are you, are you going to make the presentation?
I'm gonna make the presentation. I just wanted her to induce, introduce herself, so she could tell you what she's doing, and then I'll get on with the variance request.
Okay, sure.
Hi, my name is Barbara Lau, and I'm here for the variance to allow me to open a convenience It will be beneficial for everyone walking distance to the store and to allow me the variance.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, uh, the handout which I gave is just a, a picture showing the proximity of the property, which is in the red circle and, and black, uh, to the other zoning districts in the area. And as you can see, it's very close, um, to the D1 and D3 MU districts, um, which exist right across the street from it. So, I'll go over that later on, but I just wanted you, I wanted to give you a sense of just how close everything was there. So, uh, tonight, we're requesting a variance, uh, be granted to allow a convenience store for under 10,000 square feet, uh, in the C residential or RC district, as I'll refer to it. The Board knows there's five requirements, uh, the applicant needs to meet in order for the Board to grant the variance. We're going to adjust each one of those requirements, and welcome any questions that the Board may have. First, uh, the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The variance request is for a convenience store under 10,000 square feet. This might actually be more accurately described as a small grocery store, um, or a market, but the ordinance is limited in its definition of uses, but it's not going to be a 7-Eleven, it's not going to be a Cumberland Farm, it's going to be a small convenience store catering to the Latino population with specialty foods, um, and certainly not, not your typical convenience store. This proposed use will not threaten the health, safety, or general welfare or convenience of the city in any way. The proposed use is low-impact, will generate minimal traffic, minimal noise, no really real detrimental effects to the surrounding area. For something to be really contrary to the public interest, the variance has, must be marked, must be in marked degree, uh, in conflict with the ordinance, such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. The proposed use for a convenience store in no way rises to this level, um, and in fact, it's going to be in the public interest by providing a purposeful and safe use for this property, which otherwise may remain vacant for, uh, some time. This use would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as similar uses are already located within this district. In fact, a nearly identical variance was granted by this Board for 6 Kinsley Street last October, um, as you may, many of you may recall. And as the Board noted at that time, there are many small convenience stores sprinkled throughout the downtown area, uh, which has really become part of the downtown experience for those walking and needing easy access to a convenience store. Based on these facts, the requested variance does not conflict with the purpose of the or, of the ordinance, and is not contrary to the public interest, and is consistent with other uses in the area. This use also will not, will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Spirit of the ordinance is really to ensure reasonable and compatible use of the property while ensuring the city's health, safety, convenience, and general welfare. The proposed use of the property is low-impact, will not result in any negative effects on the surrounding properties or the area as a whole, nor will the proposed use generate any significant traffic, noise, odors, or cause any detrimental effects within the surrounding area. Additionally, these small grocery stores are promoting what the newer urban, urban planning models are promoting, and that is, they allow for pedestrian access to, to downtown stores without the need for vehicular traffic. They, uh, therefore, the spirit of the ordinance, which... vehicular traffic. They, therefore, the spirit of the ordinance, which is to promote the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of Nashua, is observed by the requested variance. Next, we believe substantial justice will be done by granting the variance because the benefits the applicant are not outweighed by the harm to the general public. Here, the variance being granted will not result in any appreciable harm to the public. It will allow the applicant to operate a small grocery store. It will be a positive overall communal, community benefit, and it's going to allow for a functionally obsolete property to be utilized to the benefit of the community. This is significantly more benign and of lower impact than of other, than other allowed uses within this district, and it's not out of character with the surrounding neighbors. Thus, the benefits to the applicant are significantly outweighed by any harm to the public. Also, the proposed use will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties, as the requested use will not alter the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding properties. It's a low environmental impact. It's going to create no noise. It's going to create no traffic. It's not going to alter the exterior of the building in any way, and thus the uses, um, the values of the surrounding properties are not going to be affected by this use. Finally, the little, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship due to the special conditions of the property. The property at 101 Elm consists of a building of approximately 7,000 square feet. That includes all three floors, the basement, the first floor, and the second floor. It's mixed-use space. There's apartments on the top. There's a commercial space on the bottom. The lot's only approximately 5,100 square feet. The considerable size of the buildings compared to the lot size severely limits the available parking on the lot and makes the, the commercial space really functionally obsolete, save for this type of use. The property is unique in that it's in a, it's a mixed-use building lying at the very corner of the RC District, and it butts both the D1 MU and the D3 MU districts, both of which allow convenience stores. So if you look at, uh, if you look at the map, walking five paces across the street to the blue area, or five paces across the street to the green area, would both allow convenience stores. The neighbor, right across the street is the Elm Street Elementary School. There is a collision center also across the street, and the Walgreens is right there. So, we're really talking about properties that, that exist in our like in this neighborhood. There's also no fair and substantial relationship that exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance's provision and the specific application of this provision to the property. The intent of the RC District's permitted uses is to ensure that they are compatible and consistent uses while protecting the community's health, safety, convenience, and general welfare. The property has historically had a non-residential use, and similar uses exist within the district, which shows that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the ordinance's restrictions and its application to the property. The proposed use is reasonable as it's benign and of low impact. The proposed use will not diminish the character of the neighborhood, as similar uses already exist on nearby properties. Given that the board determines that those criteria outlined don't establish a hardship, a hardship still exists owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. As already stated, due to the size of the lot, the existence of the current structures, and the proximity to the D1 and D3 zones severely limit the uses of the property. If the variance is denied, the property is held to the strict conformance with the ordinance. The application, the applicant will be unable to really open for business. Property would have to be used for strictly residential purposes in the RC District, which restricts the use and brings with it the probability of a vacant space, which it is right now, which would increase the health and safety risk to the sm, to the surrounding community. So for all those reasons above, we believe the board must grant the use variance, and we welcome any questions or comments that the board might have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Ms. McKay, do you have any questions? Mr. Courier, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a question. Uh, we have on our table 15-1, Number 52, is basically a convenience store, and that's it. And I agree with the attorney's description and the applicant's description that the proposed use is, is not like a 7-Eleven or, you know, like a, a typically high-volume convenience store, and I was wondering if the applicant could suggest some succinct and clear language that would, would capture that.
At the risk of trying to draft, redraft the zoning ordinance, I almost think, you know, within the ordinance, it, it, it's not quite a farmer's market either, although it, it sort of is going to function as that, but if, I think, just the limit of the square footage of 10,000 square feet, under 10,000 square feet, and the fact that we're not going to have parking here, we're going to have to get a parking waiver, I think, from the, um, from the Planning Department, is going to really limit the amount of volume and the amount of traffic which goes through there on a daily basis. I would think that some of the, some of the biggest volume is going to be from the Elm Street Elementary School, and those kids are not going to be driving. So, I, I think it's a good low-impact use of this building. It really is going to promote, you know, neighbors walking down with their own grocery bags, getting a handful of groceries and going home. And so, I, I hesitate to, to think on the fly about what a restrictive definition would be, but would welcome any suggestions you might have.
Well, I didn't have a suggestion. We have used, like, ethnic foods and such in the past, but was just throwing that out to you. Okay, I'm also-
And, and that will, if, if that's a condition, that, that will be what this is used for. There'll be, um, a lot of Latino ethnic foods and trying to draw from that community.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a que, question. Well, first of all, I'll comment, the Elm Street is a middle school, it's not Elm Street.
No, I'm sorry, yes. I don't, still don't think they're driving.
But it, and, and it's going away at, at some point, and theoretically in the near future. Okay. My question was regarding deliveries.
Yes.
A convenience store, what, a store that would naturally need to have supply deliveries at some point. Can you speak to the timing, the volume of such deliveries, and where, where the delivery vehicles would park while they're making their deliveries?
I can speak to the volume. We had anticipated, and the application says that, I think, on page three, that there's going to be one to two deliveries per week. There is, and perhaps the owner can address, there is a side parking area, which would allow for a delivery truck to back in and, and make the deliveries, but there'll, there'll be no large semis going in there. It'll be a smaller block truck that'll have to be making those.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question I had. Any further questions from the board? Okay. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this application? If you, I see a hand raised. Would you please come up to the lectern and give your name and address, and you have five minutes to say what you'd like.
Yes, hi, my name is Gabriel of Main Fulton Street. I just wanted to make a comment, because we live in the nearby area, and we don't really have a, a Hispanic convenience store that sells the products that we look for. We usually have to travel maybe 10, 15 minutes, like 15-minute walk to get to Sally's or the Chestnut Convenience Store, and having, I think it'll be very benefi, beneficial to the Hispanic community, sorry, the Hispanic community, to have a store placed there. That, that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the room who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, step up to the lectern, give your name and address, and take your five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Antonio Ruiz. I'm the owner of the building, and also I, when she's proposed me to rent for that particular store, conveniently store in Spanish, I, I agree 100% because I really like the idea. They put it in there, just like the other person here just say. It's a, it's a lot of Spanish community around, and it's going to be a very small little store, and not be a lot of traffic, and I have a plenty of space to park behind when I deliver anything, which is going to be a small. I used to be owner of a Brazilian store, uh, 1 Spring Street. It's a very small used store. I owned it for a long time, and then I bought this building. I remodeled all the building. I bought the land next to the building to be a parking lot. Used to be abandoned building, very dirty, very bad. Now it's a nice and clean. I think it's going to be very great for the community, have a nice place in there, nice and clean, and people can enjoy and buy some groceries and help with the community, the Spanish community. It's going to be great. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? I see a hand raised. Please come up to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and take your five minutes.
Hi, my name is Evangelina. I live in 79 Vine Street. I have a little brother that goes to Elm Street, and I think it's beneficial for him to grab some snacks after school or something, so. I think that's really good that she's making a corner store there.
Did I, did I, I only heard a first name?
Um, Evangelina Velez.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wants to raise their hand and speak in favor of the application in the audience? Okay. Not seeing anybody here. Anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in favor of the application? Oh, yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Falk. We do have a letter in favor of the application. I should read that. Hello, this email is in support of the corner store that is process of opening on 101 Elm Street. I believe a convenience store opening in this location will be extremely beneficial to the community, especially because there is a middle school right across the street. Me being a member of the Hispanic community will love this because it will save me the long walk to have to go to Sally's or the Chestnut Convenience Store just to get to Cezon, get Cezon or Adobo. I hope this gets approved. Thank you, Gabriel. Is that, that was you? Okay. Yeah, okay. Gabriel Velez, yes. Okay, so, sent a letter and we spoke. That's fine. I didn't see anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in favor of the application. Okay. So, is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any hands raised. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anyone. Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, your comments?
I don't think that it's inadvisable to support this application. I think it's advisable. It's a small convenience store. It's very cultural, and I remember as a young child growing up and a young adult, there was an ethnic convenience store in our neighborhood, and it was just easier to get what we needed. It was of the Polish and Hungarian culture, but it supported how I grew up, my neighbors, and my family. So I understand the logic with wanting this small cultural convenience store. Also, it's going to be small. It's mostly walk-ins. There's not going to be a lot of traffic, so, and the area would support it. So I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in favor of the application. First of all, the application, I find, was very thorough. The applicant made, you know, the information that was presented by the applicants, um, by the applicant was, again, thorough. I, I find that, again, that the area that's in, notwithstanding its location, and it's definitely, you know, right at the corner of that zone, but, but I also believe that, you know, from, from just driving that area, I, it, it's something that I would probably expect to see there, you know. There's been a business, longstanding business there. There's been businesses there for many years. Again, I think that this, this is, again, I don't believe the impact is high to the area. I don't think it's going to be detrimental. I think it only can be a positive, I think, for the people, but also for the area, and again, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mencara?
I also support the application. Historically, this has been a commercial building. It's been used for multiple commercial uses. I think we've had testify, you know, testimony indicating that it would be a benefit to the neighborhood. I, I just also note this is a neighborhood that has a, a high percentage of households that lack access to a automobile. So, so having small grocery stores, convenience stores that are in walking distance is, is definitely a, a benefit to the public. And I would also just note, as has been pointed out, there's a pretty intensive commercial use directly across the street, the Walgreens. And again, you know, this is at the intersection of some different zones. Really, its, its commercial use is categorized as well as across the street, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
In some way, I support the application. I have to say, I had pause at first because of the, the parking situation, and, and, but I do believe it'll be a low-impact convenience store. The other pause I had was, you know, I had the experience of a convenience store near my house, and, and after a while, there'd be, there were three tractor-trailing refrigerated trucks that would show up every week for a long time, and it was like the neighborhood all of a sudden had a truck stop in its backyard. But it's really, to me, the goodwill and of the potential owner here, Mrs. Lau, to make sure something like that doesn't happen and cause a problem in the street or a problem in noise. I, I, my, my gut is that that will be not an issue. I hope not. But other than that, for the reasons stated by my board members, I support the application.
Thank you. Like Mr. Courier, I was at first hesitant because of the parking requirement, but I also, like Mr. Courier, I recognized that the majority of the customers of the store would be walk-ins, and therefore, the parking, at least to me, was not an issue. That's something the planning board will take up. This, this part of the city is not well-served by food stores, and having a, a food store that caters to the, the communities that are nearby is, I think, a good thing, so I support the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for Reyes Realty LLC owner Barbara Lau, applicant 101 Elm Street, Sheet 97, Lot 130, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 72, to convert first floor of an existing building from a medical supply store to a grocery store at most 10,000 square feet in the RC Zone Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, special conditions, as we've talked about, it's been a longstanding commercial use type of operation building in that location, and again, it is literally right on the corner of, of two zones that have more high-intensive use in that area. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you. And Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to approve.
Mr. Mencara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mencara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Five to nothing. Congratulations. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, they also have to go to the Planning Board, so it's-
Yes.
If they're aware.
Well, I, I did mention that-
I'm sure they're aware of that.
They have to go to the Planning Board, yes.
You're welcome. Good night, folks.
Okay. Moving on to case number four, and I'll just remind that, that we didn't have anybody here for case number one, so we pushed- case number one, so we pushed that to the end. I don't know whether the applicant has shown up.
Mr. Chair, we don't see the applicant or heard. Maybe we can just continue to the following meeting.
Okay, well, let's, when we get there.
Maybe after this next case.
Yeah. I was just commenting in case somebody from that case had shown up and saying, wait a minute, where's my case?
Yeah.
So, okay. So, room is now empty, other than, okay. Case number four. Owner is Long Family Rulable Trust, Norman Long trustee. Applicant is Kevin Blay. Blay? Wait a minute. What did I do here?
That's correct.
Okay, now, this says the address is 101 Elm Street, but that's not right. The address is 36 Murray Avenue. Okay, I'm looking at that and saying, wait a minute, that's not right. Okay, 36 Murray Avenue.
The address is correct, though.
Yes, yes, the rest of it is right. Sheet 138, lot 186, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to remove an existing deck and construct a 13-foot by 19-foot enclosed four-season porch. This is in the R9 Zone Ward 1. Is there somebody on Zoom to present the case because there's nobody in the audience I can't see who that last name is.
Randy?
I think it says Randy B.
Okay.
I requested him to unmute, and he has not.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak to this case and need to unmute if you are going to do that? Well, I'm going to propose that both case number one and case number four get deferred to a future meeting. Any objections to doing that?
When you say future meeting, you mean that such time as the applicant's contact the.
Yeah, the applicant will need to.
It's not muted now, maybe.
Sorry, what was that, Mr. Falk?
I saw Randy B. did not have the muted sign. Maybe they're ready now.
Is. Well, okay, I'm going to suggest that Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier, if you would contact the applicants for cases number one and four and work with them to schedule, reschedule their application, so.
Well, we should probably just.
I would recommend continuing with 28.
To 28?
The purpose is notification.
Okay, so.
Next meeting.
So, yes, both of.
I just note that the next meeting has eight cases.
Yeah, that's, that's, maybe it could be moved to the first one in October.
October 12.
Yeah. I don't know many, who knows how many cases we'll get then.
Right now, I think we only have just a few.
Yeah, and the 24th meeting is going to be long, even without being eight cases.
It's up to the board. If you'd like to do it on October 12th for both the first and fourth case, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
So, kind of a comment.
Yes.
I support any, any motion to whatever date. I just was curious. I guess I didn't know if we were, not we, but there is no statute or nothing that says that we have to take up at a certain time. We can, we can schedule as we want. You follow what I'm saying? If the applicant wants to come the next meeting, is that something that we can say no, it's going to be the following meeting, or do we have to? Is there any type of guidelines or laws that we have to follow in that case?
Only when we initially receive and stamp in an application, but the board can table it to a future meeting, whether it's the next one or one that's a month out.
All right.
It's pretty common that something is tabled to the second meeting from now, so that's not unreasonable.
I'm sorry. Had we chosen not to take any action, they would have had to re-notify, and it wouldn't, it couldn't have been the next meeting.
Yes. Should be tabled to a date certain, so.
Yes, okay. So we're going to make a motion. I will make a motion to table cases number one and four. One is 7 Selpan Way, and four is 36 Murray Avenue, to the first meeting in October, which is October 12th. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, I saw your hand up first. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes yes.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Mankara?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Okay, it's five to nothing in favor of tabling those cases to the October 12th meeting. Okay. Let's see. We have no rehearing requests. We have an agenda for the next meeting. Not that one. Reviewing this for, for regional impact, so the meeting for September 28th. Does anybody see any regional impact? Mr. Courier, do you see any regional impact for the agenda for September 28th?
Well, I'm actually just seeing it now. I know Ms. Poirier sent it a little earlier, but just give me about one minute, and I'll be able to make my way through it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll give every, since it's long, I'll give everybody a moment to review it.
Actually, since I have the mic, I've made it through the end, and I do not believe there's any, I don't, I don't see any regional impact.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
Mr. Boucher, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
Ms. McKay, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
And I, Mr. Leno, do not see any regional impact. Okay, no, no regional impact. We do have minutes from the August 24th meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look those over, and are there any corrections or edits that people want to make? Not seeing anybody. I didn't have any. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, so Ms. McKay has made a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Mr. Mankara, why don't you, you can raise your hand.
I was going to second.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mankara, second. You've got to get in there. Be quick on the draw, okay? We're going to, okay, take a motion, a roll call to approve the minutes. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion to approve the minutes with no changes.
Mr. Mankara?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Motion to adjourn. Who would, Mr. Mankara made a motion to adjourn. Okay, we are, and I don't think we even need a second.
No.
Okay, so we are adjourned at 7:29.